Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this special meeting of the West Monmouth City Commission. Today is Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is five oh two P M. We will proceed with the agenda. Item three point one. Public hearing of resolution number two ten dash twenty-five F. Adopting the tentative fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six operating and debt service mileage rates and resolution number two eleven dash twenty-five F. Adopting the tentative fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six operating. Mr. Soufrant.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Bridgette Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the first public hearing to adopt the tentative fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget and mileage rate. Leading up to this evening, we held two mayor commission budget work sessions on July twenty-second and August eleventh. We also held two community budget meetings, one in person and one on Zoom on July twenty-third. And we had the special commission meeting setting the not to exceed rate on July seventeenth. Tonight, we're going to review the tentative fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six general fund operating budget. We will also review the other non-general fund tentative budgets and discuss the tentative mileage rate. Florida statute one sixty-six point two four one governs the budget process for the municipalities detailing how we must create and adopt the budget annually. Tonight, we bring you the final numbers for the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget. Once everything was complete, there was a seven hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollar increase in the general fund budget compared to the draft discussed at the July twenty-second work session. This increase was due to revised utility taxes and final intergovernmental revenue numbers from the state. With the increase in revenues, we were able to add additional funding detailed on the bottom of this slide toward waterfront activities. We enhanced funding available for maintenance and repair within our facilities and allocated an increase towards economic development. At a summary glance, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative general fund operating budget is balanced at two hundred and eighty-three million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, fifty dollars. This is a seven point four percent increase or nineteen point five million more than fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. This budget also includes a tentative mileage rate that remained flat at eight point one three zero eight. And the overall citywide balanced budget excluding CRA and ECR is seven hundred and eighty million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. As we continue our review and discussion surrounding the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget, it is important that we discuss and review the connection of the budget with the strategic plan. The strategic plan is one that you, the mayor and city commission designated eight strategic pillars that set the foundation for future budgeting and resource allocation. You see the pillars listed here on this slide. One piece of the annual budget process is ensuring that the strategic objectives are carried out with appropriate funding. In order to illustrate the correlation between the budget and the strategic plan, we analyzed the entire citywide budget excluding ECR and CRA and allocated the funding by strategic pillar. As shown in this graphic, the largest budget allocation is the strategic pillar for natural systems and water resource protection with a thirty-one point seven percent allocation. This pillar consists of water and sewer funds. The next is public health and public safety at twenty-six point four percent, including all police and fire citywide budgets, including any related grants and capital items, as well as all vehicle replacement budgets. Financial sustainability and organizational excellence came in at eighteen point two percent of the allocation, including all internal service funds, many general government funds, and parking. Next is built environment at fifteen point four percent. This includes gas tax, building permitting, HCD grant funds, and non-public safety capital items. Our arts, neighborhoods, and community engagement pillar has six point one percent allocation and includes parks and recreation, the waterfront, library, and art in public places. Climate and energy has one point two percent of the allocation and includes Curry Park redevelopment, seawall replacement, drainage improvements, and stormwater expenditures. Our equity and empowerment comes in at point six percent, including HR and the city attorney's office. And finally, education, economy, and jobs at point four percent for economic development and Office of Small and Minority Business programs. This slide just further shows the impact of the city's resource allocation towards the strategic pillars and creating a community that is thriving and that we can all be proud of. As we begin our review of the general fund tentative budget, let's look at the taxable value and tax revenue that supports a large part of the budget. In the last line of this chart, you can see that our taxable value from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six increased by nine point four percent, up to twenty-five point four billion. Holding the proposed mileage rate flat at eight point one three zero eight results in an eleven point five million dollars in new tax revenue reflected in that last row. Also note that fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six would be the third year of holding the mileage rate flat and that the city reduced its mileage rate in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, foregoing two million and one point one million in tax revenue each year respectively. The chart before you details the general fund revenues by category, comparing adopted fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget to the tentative fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget. This chart also displays the dollar percentage change from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six. Two items to note on this slide are a reduction in our interest income slightly as the market begins to shift. We also see a reduction in the transfers in to the general fund, which is reduced due to the innovative policing technology transfer, which is now included in the administrative fee, but it was shown as a transfer in in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Let's review the tentative general fund revenue highlights for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget. As stated, our property taxes increased by eleven point six million. License and permits increased by four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, mainly due to Florida power and light franchise fees increasing based off of a rate increase, as well as seeing a minimal increase in some of our inspection services based on trending collections. Intergovernmental revenues increased one point two million from increases in state shared revenue, half-cent sales tax, and utility pilot, with the largest increase being our utility pilot. Charges for services increased six point four million with increases in the household, single-family garbage fee, a small increase in multifamily recycling, and the largest being the increase in our administrative fee, which includes the allocation from CRA, utilities, and building permitting. The other taxes category increased by seven hundred and four thousand dollars due to utility taxes and business tax. I would also like to note and remind everybody that our administrative fee is calculated by an outside contractor who utilizes and creates the cost allocation plan, which is driven off of our general fund expenditures. And that is how we determine what that administrative fee is that the CRA, building permitting, and utilities pay into the general fund. Here's the general fund revenues by category, showing the largest category are property taxes at fifty-two point six percent of our overall general fund revenue, followed by charges for services at nineteen point two percent and intergovernmental revenue at eleven point five percent. Moving now to the expenditures. Here you can see the general fund expenditures by category, again comparing adopted fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget to the tentative fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget. This chart also displays the dollar and percentage change from year to year. We will dive into the detail here in the upcoming slides. The highlights of the general fund expenditures start with our personnel services category, increasing nine point five million dollars, which is resulting from health insurance increases, cost of living increases for all employees, and step pay and pension contribution increases for public safety. The nine point five million dollar overall increase also accounts for a decrease in workers' compensation and the inclusion of forty-nine new full-time equivalent employees or FTEs throughout the general fund, which we will discuss in later slides. Continuing with our general fund expenditures, there was a four point two million dollar increase in materials and services, with the largest increases coming from contractual services, operational expenditures, and repair and maintenance used to cover tree trimming services, tennis center operators, janitorial cleaning services, and building maintenance, to name a few. The increases shown on this screen also account for any cost escalators in place in our current contracts, whether it be a support agreement or a service contract. The general fund capital outlet increased by one point five million dollars for police vehicle replacements related to the collective bargaining agreement. This total budget is three point seven million for that police, for those police vehicles, but the budget increased one point five million for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. Our transfers out of the general fund to other funds increased by one point two million. We reduced the general fund one million dollar contribution towards roads as the CRA is now contributing one million dollars towards roads in place of the general fund. This allowed us to shift that one million dollars plus an additional one point two million to the waterfront fund to cover expenditures that are no longer permissible to the, for the CRAs to fund at the waterfront. I also would like to note, while it's not called out on this slide because it's not a change, but included in the tentative fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget, we are keeping with our strategic objectives of financial sustainability and best budgeting practices by funding our IT replacement plan at one point two million for a second year, funding the road paving with the assistance of CRA for a fourth year, and for a fourth year, funding our vehicle replacement program with a two million dollar general fund contribution for non-police vehicles, the three point seven million dollar contribution for police vehicles, and then seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars is funded out of fire assessment fee. All of these initiatives are a testament to meeting our strategic pillar of financial sustainability and organizational excellence. Here's a view of the general fund expenditures from a different angle, showing that the majority of our expenditures, sixty-seven percent, are in personnel services and benefits for the employees who provide the high-quality services to our residents. The next largest category is seventeen point seven percent for materials and services used to provide those services to the residents. This slide gives you a rundown of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget compared to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget by general fund department. We will cover the larger departments in later slides, but some items to note for the smaller departments shown here. You see an increase in HCD, which is directly attributed to a shift in the code enforcement moving from the police department budget into HCD. You also see a one point two million dollar increase in support services. Nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of that increase is directly attributed to additional funds added for city hall repairs and aging infrastructure within other city buildings. The general government department increase is mainly attributed to an increase in contingency, which went up by two point one million in order to meet the policy, which says we budget for one percent of the general fund revenue. Now we'll look a little deeper at some of our larger departments. The Department of Public Works budget decreased by six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or two point nine percent and brings in twenty-one million in revenue. The department remained flat in terms of number of employees. The decrease in the personnel category in public works is related to workers' comp going down, and the decrease in internal services is related to general liability and auto liability decreases. As a reminder, because you'll hear me mention this a few more times throughout the presentation, our general liability, auto liability, and workers' comp are allocated to each department based on that department's percentage of claims for the prior three years, as well as then there's an allocation based on FTE count for each cost center is how it gets charged. So if you're seeing something going down, we more like, most likely had a high claim year that fell off of that three-year rolling, and we saw a reduction in claims in that department. The Department of Parks and Recreation budget increased five hundred and fourteen thousand or two point one percent and brings in seven hundred and twenty-three thousand in revenue. With some staffing adjustments, Park and Recreation increased their FTEs by one. The main driver for their materials and services increase is an approved budget issue for contract staffing coverage at all of their tennis centers. As mentioned on the previous slide, Parks increased their FTE by one with the addition of a recreation program coordinator at Coleman Park. The Fire Department general fund budget increased eight point eight percent or five million dollars, and they bring in roughly six point eight million in revenues. The Fire Department budget includes an increase of twenty-six full-time equivalents. Fifteen of those were absorbed into the general fund in this budget year from a previous grant, and eleven are new positions that are approved in the, or proposed in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget. The Fire Department saw increases in their medical services, equipment, maintenance, and contracts. They also saw a three hundred and fourteen thousand dollar auto liability increase in their internal services. As mentioned on the previous slide, there are eleven new firefighter FTEs included in the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six general fund budget. Staying with the Fire Department but switching to the fire assessment fee fund. The tentative fire assessment fee budget includes funding for personnel totaling two point nine million, which covers nineteen FTEs and includes the addition of four new firefighter positions being funded out of the fire assessment fee fund. Materials and services is budgeted at four point four million, covering travel and training for annual certifications, uniforms, and bunker gear. We also have certain repair and maintenance items for ongoing projects at stations two and seven. The fire assessment fee fund covers eighty-eight thousand in internal service charges, and there's a budget of two point one million for transfers out, which covers various one-time capital items such as the rescue truck, replacement generator, roof replacement at station one, and above-ground fuel tank at station three. We also have included four hundred and fifty-six thousand in reserve for contingency for a total tentative fire assessment fee fund budget of ten million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Shifting back into the general fund, we will look at the police department expenditure budget, which increased five point six percent or five point four million and brings in one point four million in revenues. This revenue reduction shown here is just a shift again relating to code enforcement. The revenue that code brought in will now be shown under HCD's cost center. The net FTE increase in the police department is twelve point seven. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget adds thirty-three new positions to the police department, but again with the shift of roughly twenty coming out related to code. That's where you're getting that net twelve point seven FTE. One million of the one point two million increase in materials and services were directly related to approved budget issues for the police department. The ISF's intercharges increased due to general liability at almost one million dollars, and again, the capital increased by that one point five for a total of three point seven for police vehicles per the collective bargaining agreement. Again, while that net increase in FTEs for the police department is twelve point seven due to the shift from code, the department is gaining thirty-three new FTEs, twenty-five officers, two police sergeants, a senior accounting clerk, an evidence specialist, a police public records specialist, and three nine-one-one call takers. In addition to the new FTEs added to the larger departments and discussed previously, in the proposed general fund budget, we are also adding a housing finance manager in HCD, a senior relations specialist in HR, a procurement supervisor in legal, and a digital marketing strategist in the library. Now let's take a look at the citywide funds, those funds outside of the general fund, not including CRA and ECR. The combined special revenue funds have a total fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative budget of fifty-seven point five million, up nine percent from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. This is in large part due to increased gas tax and the new mobility transportation fund. Special revenue funds include gas tax, housing and community development grant funds, building permitting, fire assessment fee, waterfront, and general grant programs. The combined debt service fund has a total fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative budget of just over three point two million, a twenty-five percent increase due to increased bond payments. The combined capital funds have a total fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative budget of one hundred and thirteen point six million, an increase of eighteen percent from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Capital projects include one-cent sales tax, fleet replacement fund, IT replacement, capital and parks bond, and capital acquisition fund. This also includes the addition of the capital impact fee fund. The increase is mainly driven by the adoption of carryforward in fund balance in the one-cent sales tax fund to continue ongoing capital projects come October first. The combined enterprise funds have a total fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative budget of two hundred and twenty-nine million. That is a decrease of thirteen point five percent. The enterprise funds include water and sewer, stormwater, and parking. The decrease is driven mainly by a reduction in water and sewer R and R fund budget compared to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. The internal service ones have a total fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative budget of ninety-three million, an increase of three percent. Internal service ones include fleet maintenance, IT, and self-insurance funds. The increase is driven primarily by IT due to the contractual services and the adoption of carryforward for a data analytic infrastructure and software replacement projects for a total citywide funds budget of seven hundred and eighty million, which is a one point four increase over fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. In summary, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative general fund budget is balanced at two hundred and eighty-three million with a flat mileage rate of eight point one three zero eight, and the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tentative citywide budget excluding the CRA and ECR is balanced at seven hundred and eighty million. Following this evening's meeting, we will have the final public hearing to adopt the budget and the mileage rate on September twenty-fourth, and the budget will then go into effect on September first, excuse me, October first. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions, comments? Commissioners, President Lambert, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions, but I'm gonna start with an overarching question for the community. Can you talk a little bit about how we prioritize the budget and make sure that we include the community, the residents, our stakeholders, interests, and priorities in this process?
So we have the two various community meetings, which are on Zoom and one is in person. That is communicated through our communications department. I think this year we were about four to six weeks in advance of that meeting where we had social media blasts. We have a banner that's running across the top of the city webpage. We also use a link that is in that communication and in a press release that went out where citizens have the ability to provide any questions, any opinion through that process so that we can review it and assist it or answer them, excuse me.
No, you know, I, with all due respect, and I appreciate all the effort that went into that. I, I know that each year it's getting harder and harder to get participation in those meetings. And so I know that all year long, you, the department staff, worked very hard on this. I'm just wondering if, and I don't know if this is Administrator Johnson can speak to this, the process for getting the feedback for making sure that the budget is reflective upon the priorities that the commissioners bring up as well as the community.
In, in terms of ensuring the inclusion of the commissioners' priorities, you know, we don't have a structured process per se that is geared toward commission priorities. What we do is in general, where the board expresses, you know, priorities, we, to the extent that is financially feasible, we incorporate that into the budget. This year, we did allow commissioners to submit budget priorities or request a meeting with me on budget priorities. Now, in a couple of those meetings, it went far beyond budget priorities to just maybe concerns about district matters and whatnot. Where I got those priorities or concerns submitted in writing, we submitted written responses on those, and we identified in the written responses which of those items were incorporated in the budget. Some of the items, for example, we had requests about the sound wall on 95. That's not under the city's purview, so we provided that response. Where we had concern about continuation of funding public safety. Of course, that's incorporated within the budget. Now, the requests from commissioners didn't specify a number, but a number is dependent on financial feasibility. So in terms of the community prioritization, you know, for the most part, our prioritization has to be geared toward contractual obligations. If you look at the 19.5 million dollars of additional increase, and Ms. Prant, you correct my memory here if it's incorrect, about 65% of that 19.5 million is contractual obligations in terms of basic expenditures. So we have to cover that right off the bat. And then the remainder of that, we then look at mission critical needs. For the most part, the input from the community budget meetings really had to do with, in terms of the individuals that came to the meeting, it really had to do with perhaps items that were particular to that individual. For example, I think one of the comments had to do with the site on Tambran Avenue where we have the barrier site from one of Storm.
Storm of 28.
28, thank you. I was about to give it a different year, Mayor, thank you. So we had, that was one of the concerns that we had that just could not be incorporated into the budget. So it really depends on the input that we get from the members of the public who gives us feedback on the budget. Typically, feedback tends to be with public safety, which is incorporated in the budget. And if I'm missing something that came out of the community budget meetings that I've not articulated, please add to my comments. But outside of the community budget feedback from residents, where we can incorporate that, we do, or we inform them where that is being addressed. For example, in the past, we have had residents talk about the housing crises and having more affordable housing within the budget. So we walk them through where that is picked up, how it is funded, not all from the general fund, from various grants from either HUD or the state. But outside of that, then we look at mission critical needs and that's where the above base requests come in.
If I could, I would imagine throughout the year as well that community is giving input to each of the directors and that staff in their everyday experience with residents and issues that they're creating a list. And I'm hopeful that those things come up in your budget meetings with staff as well.
That does feed into the requests from departments to the extent that it is something that the department can undertake. You know, sometimes the feedback from residents may be for new programs or for an expansion of a program. And if that is submitted as part of their above base budget requests, we take a look at that comprehensively with all of the other budget requests. So it's a pretty fluid process. There's just no structured process where from this point in the year to this point in the year, we accept priorities and then reviewed is sort of ongoing throughout the fiscal year.
And if I could just add, this year we actually had nine individuals that showed up in person, which is the most in my time of being here, and they were very engaged. They had great questions at the end, whether it was about property taxes with some of them and how we budget for the property taxes. But everybody walked away without lingering questions and nobody was asking for something to be different. They were asking to understand. And so there's a level of that too, that you really want to see that the public can engage with us and ask those questions and feel comfortable enough to try and understand because we may see this year after year, but not everybody understands what we're looking at.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you very much for all the work that's gone into this. I appreciate it. I'm wondering if you could turn back to slide nine where it was showing year-over-year tax revenue since 2020. Thank you. When I look at this, it's, I'm pretty staggering how the revenue has increased from about 90 million in 2020 to where we are today. And one of the questions I have been getting the most from residents is, you know, looking at just the growth in the city and the way that the revenue has increased. You know, how come we're not able to turn some of that back to residents? I appreciate that we've been able to keep our millage rates steady for the past three years after lowering it two times. But even still, we have, that's about 5% more than the rollback rate. So even though we're keeping it the same millage with all of the property assessments going up, obviously this is increasing everyone's taxes. So I'm just, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about, I know you touched upon the mission critical needs and that some of the things that go into spending, the revenue is sort of automatic increases that we have to pay and then the mission critical needs. But could you talk a little bit more about, I guess, how we came to the decision that we're not in a place to, to have a millage reduction again this year? And just any, I mean, we've obviously had several discussions about it at workshops, but just for the record, because it is a question I've received from quite a few residents over the past week, knowing that we are going to be voting for this tentative budget and millage rate tonight. So if you could just talk a little bit more about that process, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I would like to respond to that, given that, you know, that is direction that comes primarily from me as the city administrator in collaboration with the mayor. So let me sort of just put it into context first. You know, when you look at where we were in FY '21, historically, our expenditures were outpacing our revenue. And we were not keeping our eyes on the growth in expenditures because we were focused on revenue. We were growing in revenue at about 4.8 and for talking purposes at about 5%. However, our expenditures were increasing, and this is base expenditures, were increasing right around 8%. So in fiscal year '21, given the pandemic and the fact that on the front end of that, we were projecting to have a revenue hit because everything was shut down. We took, I won't say advantage of that, we bit the bullet and had to do a level set to account for the projected $7 million in revenue loss and then an additional $4 million in expenditures that were exceeding revenue. So we did a level set in the general fund of $11 million. So that's where we were going into FY '22. Although the revenues continued to increase in FY '22 because we were fortunate because of migration from the East Coast that came into our city and keeping the city up and running during the pandemic, we saw the benefit of huge construction and that's reflected in the 17.6% if we were to round it. So the board then started with the millage reduction plan. Why we are not in a position to recommend a continuation of the millage reduction is because of the fact that although our expenditures, base expenditures are now at about 4% and the revenue is trending just a tad bit higher than that somewhere at about 7%, 6% annually, because the city is in this explosive growth mode, the needs for primarily public safety is increasing exponentially. So if we were to hypothetically, if we were to just fund the 65% increase in the base budget and did not recommend funding any of the additional expenditures, mission critical, the 33 for police or the 11 for fire, we would be in a position to then take that additional revenue and just do a millage reduction. If we were not in a mission critical funding mode of increasing police and fire, we have a growing community. Police was already way behind the eight ball. When you look at the fact that in 2009, during the economic downturn, where they lost a substantial number of officers and did not get back to the 2013 level until 2019, with the population growth in the city between those years, we're paying, playing rather, catch up, excuse me. So the mayor and I felt it was critical that we include additional positions for police, the additional positions for fire. But I could, we could not just include the mission critical positions for public safety, although that is priority one, at the exclusion of the six positions that we have recommended in the other departments. Those department situation is that we have a workload situation. And I have heard from a couple of commissioners on perhaps a periodic, regular basis about why if we are making the efficiency improvements, we can't reduce staff. And here's the reason why. As our population has increased, that impacts housing. That impacts parks and recreation. And where we have had staff doubling up on responsibilities because we've not increased the staffing in those operations, at some point you get to a breaking point. So we had to start addressing some of the workload issues in the departments. And then on the internal governance side, you know, we have increased our FTE base significantly. And unfortunately, when you have more employees, typically you're gonna have more HR issues that you have to address. Our current situation is that I have one staff person handling a 45% increase in investigation. It's just not feasible that one person can continue to handle that kind of workload. Therein lies the rationale for including an additional person in HR. So it varies in terms of why we're not in a position to recommend a millage reduction. If we did not have mission critical needs, valid mission critical needs, our base increases in the budget or below what the revenue is, we could just take that and do a millage reduction. But that's not the reality of what we are facing right now. We're a growing organization, a growing city. So we have to add to public safety as well as add minimally to the other departments to alleviate the workload burden that we're facing.
I, I think another thing we need to point out is we had to play catch up in terms of compensation to our employees. For years, we were paying our employees less than, than market. And so that's true of public safety, non-public safety employees. So commissioners, you may recall, in the last two to three years, we've had significant cost of living adjustments, market adjustments as well just to remain competitive in the, the, the public sector market. So, and that comes with a cost. Any follow-up to that, Commissioner? Any other questions, Commissioner Ward and then Commissioner Warren?
I think that brings up a good point about the compensation. And I was trying to just do the, you know, play-by-play and maybe, I don't know if it's possible in between now and the final, to kind of get an understanding of those big-ticket items between, you know, 109 million and 137 million. Because I do know we were, we were trying to compete with the private sector and increase. So I know a lot of that is, is compensation to staff. But maybe we could get a better understanding of these big-ticket items that we've had to pay cost on throughout that, that period between 20 and 25.
Okay, we can work on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very happy with the aggressive approach that we made previously to compensation and addressing the issues as it related to the disproportion that we were looking at and what we were paying. So I think that we're certainly moving in the right direction. I know that we are doing things to stay on track so that we don't have that type of issue where we're falling behind again. So I, I think that those are all wonderful moves and I'm looking forward to us being, remaining consistent and competitive. I do have a question about the outreach and engagement. And I know that some time ago, there was an initiative where we rolled out something and I can't remember the acronym, it was BRAD or CHAD or.
BERT.
It was BERT. In order to look at making sure that information was available so that people can participate. Because although it is an increase in the amount of people that were present, when you think of us being a city this size, it's still very disappointing that we had that type of turnout for this type of discussion when I know that residents contact us or contact me constantly about issues like public safety and roadways and lighting and tree trimming and all of these things that they would have had an opportunity to at least be heard on from someone other than me. So it's just, I'm, I'm hoping that we can look at how we're approaching this as we continue to move forward and that we're doing things that are really being effective to ensure that the public is aware. We can't make them come out.
Correct. And BERT was used for the budget process. That is how we use the engagement of getting out the social media and using the website as well as the form that they have to respond to us and give us the questions that they have.
If I could add a footnote. In the almost 40 years of doing municipal budgeting, you know, here has been my experience and that is my experience present day. Issues usually drive residents out at budget meetings. It's an issue that they tend to be very passionate about, that they are engaged in. Or on the reverse, an issue that they are very passionate about that is proposed to be cut. And to put it into context in terms of our experience here with resident engagement in the budget process, and I don't like to be redundant, but I need to be to help us keep it into focus. When we were looking at trying to balance the FY '21 budget and we went through 11 work sessions, the hot burning, or maybe one of the hot burning issues there was the proposal to cut positions in the library, cut hours. That issue resonated with our residents and it drew them out because they were adamantly opposed to the proposal to cut library staff. On the issue about reducing programming in parks and recreation, that was another issue that was near and dear to residents' heart and that drew. to residents hard, and that drew them out. My experience has been, and I don't in no way intend to color our residents with a broad brush, so I'm going to state this very gently. Our budget, because it is not proposing to do away with programs and services to shut down activities that the residents have come to enjoy, I think it's one of the main reasons why we don't have folks in T-shirts opposing the cuts. And if you look at just what we were facing when the word got out that the CRA was doing away with nights on, in Northwood, the Holiday in Paradise, and I may be misstating the terminology for that event, in the Northwest. Now, the residents didn't get to the point of having to come here to oppose that because you all got emails with their concern about the proposal from the CRA not being able to fund those programs. So what we did was the general fund picked them up. But if I were a betting city administrator, I will put my money on the fact that if the general fund had not picked up those marquee programs in Northwood and Northwest, we would have residents from the Northwest and from Northwood at these budget hearings objecting to those being proposed to be cut. You know, so again, I think because we have worked diligently, very methodically to maintain your number one priority, public safety, closely followed behind that, the quality of life that our residents have been afforded, we don't have a situation where, for the most part, nothing is 100%, but for the most part, where residents are outraged about the budget proposal. And that's just from my humble perspective.
Any follow-up?
No.
President Lambert?
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, that was along the lines of the answer that I thought I would get when I asked my question earlier. So I was grateful to hear that extra information. You mentioned earlier that the budget focus is on our contractual obligations. And I know that since you've become our city administrator, you have done a tremendous job of making sure that we don't have any gotchas or any, you know, anything lurking that isn't taken care of. But I was just curious if there are any additional long-term liabilities or unfunded mandates that we're looking forward, you know, in the future years that we're anticipating coming?
I was gonna say, I have two that are floating in my head that I know I think about regularly, as I know Ms. Johnson holds.
Well, one thing I'm afraid of is the attack on property taxes, which seems to be led out of Tallahassee. I don't know where that's going to end up. But if you recall the presentation, I believe, what, 52.6% of our revenue comes from property taxes, with a significant portion, you remember the charts, going toward public safety. How do we pay our police? How do we pay our firefighters if we can't collect property taxes? I don't get it, but...
Mr. Mayor, that is one of them for sure. The second is really our infrastructure needs, making sure that we are preparing and getting ready. Because when your HVAC goes out in the building, that's an immediate scramble so that you have air, as we live in Florida. So those are the two things that I know we've been working behind the scenes as we look forward. And there's significant improvement in the fiscal year 2026 budget to prepare us for those infrastructure needs.
Ms. Johnson, I think you probably...
Yes, I would add to that. The other thing that keeps me up at night, in addition to those that were mentioned by the Mayor and Ms. Soufrant, you know, is the potential that FEMA is going to be restructured whereby the percentage that municipalities are required to pay in the unlikely event that you get a hurricane or some other natural disaster, that is a real possibility that we're going to be in a position where we have to fund a much, much higher percentage of whatever the damage happens to be in that we will not get reimbursement to the level that we have gotten it in the past. And along that line, and I don't want to be doom and gloom, I think just with the budget in general, I like staying up at night just thinking about it, but that's a whole nother matter. If we get in a situation with the federal government where grants that are made available to local governments are cut completely or cut back, that's going to be another impact. When you look at how we have been able to really stay on pace with the firefighters that we have in our complement, it has been, through the SAFER grant, that's been a lifesaver. So if that goes away, that then becomes another major financial challenge.
Cops grant out of the Department of Justice. City Attorney, did you have something to add?
Just really quick, I'd like to also add, as we spoke about unfunded mandates, we, the administration, legal, and our lobby team, stay in constant contact with our federal lobbyists, the state lobbyists. We watch all of the bills as they come through, and we work with the League of Cities and others to try to address those before they become law. So hopefully, we stay ahead of the game.
Well, I think also we need to give credit to where credit is due. Commissioner, you may recall when we needed to replace police vehicles, fire vehicles, it was always a scramble because we were not setting aside the monies in anticipation of those needs. When Ms. Johnson came on, she instilled best practices, which we needed to start investing ahead of time, putting money aside. So when these vehicles needed to be replaced, we wouldn't have to scramble and figure out how we were going to find it. That's just one example of the best practices that she's brought to the table. Also, with our offices and maintenance of our buildings and stuff, we've tried to start putting money aside for that, just as any smart homeowner would do, right? I mean, you don't wait until your roof collapses to start figuring out how to pay for it. Hopefully, you're trying to set money aside ahead of time to anticipate those needs. But those best practices were brought to fore when Ms. Johnson came aboard. And maybe, Ms. Johnson, you might want to identify some others. But the vehicle replacement program, I know, was one that we started investing in ahead of time to make sure we didn't have these surprises come budget time.
I did have a follow-up, Mayor.
Oh, yes, yes.
This leads right to the next question that I had, which was on Slide 19. You talked about the 20% increase, and I think the line item was called general government or something like that. And I believe if I understand what you said was that because this is a direct result of a percentage of our total budget, that this increased.
So included in the general government line item is the line item called contingency. By policy, we state that we will budget 1% of our general fund revenue in contingency. That's roughly 2.8 million for fiscal year 2026. That's a $2.1 million increase from where we were at for fiscal year 2025, which at that point, we were not directly in policy.
Well, I'm grateful for the attention to our financial stability in this area as well. But I just noted it as one of the ones that was a larger increase, but that makes sense. Thank you.
Let me just ask for a point of clarification, because now I may have this wrong, but I thought based on the 1%, we were required by policy, it should be 2.8, but we were not able to fully fund that. So we're funding it at 2.1 million.
We are funding it at 2.8. It's the 2.1 plus the existing 700 that was in the fiscal year '25 budget.
Thank you. I stand corrected.
Any other questions, comments on the budget? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve resolution number 210-25F, adopting a tentative ad valorem millage rate of 8.1308 mils for general operating purposes, which is 5.39% more than the calculated rollback rate of 7.7152 and a millage rate of 0.0580 mils for general obligation debt service for a total millage rate of 8.1888 mils.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there a second?
I think so.
Did we get a second? Oh, okay. I didn't hear it. Okay. Discussion. Hearing and all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Hearing and all opposition, motion carries unanimously.
President Lambert?
May I move to approve resolution number 211-25F, adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and second in discussion. Hearing and all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing and all opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll turn to comments from the public. Do we have any cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Okay, that is the final item on this agenda. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much, Board.